French kiss.
Yeah.
I thought you meant like.
Some.
Oh, no.
Like actual kissing.
Yeah. Isn't that a great costume?
That's even better.
I know.
I love that. That's cute.
Do appreciate.
But they're selling it as a dollar a day.
You know, Kathy. Yeah.
Like, that's very creative.
Really well done, too.
Um, but they have.
All right, last call for any citizens comments. If you have any citizens comments, please bring them to the front. All righty, we will officially call the meeting to order at seven P M. First, first piece of business is to go through the roll call. I'm Shawn Wilson, president of the school board, and we'll have my fellow school board members introduce themselves, starting at the left, to my left.
Patty McCoyn, thank you so much for coming. It's a lovely evening to be here. Thank you.
Doug Brooks, thanks for coming out tonight.
Good evening, Anubam Chigadu. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, Patrick Keo. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Hi, everyone. Lauren Christensen, welcome.
Perfect. And Dr. Merritt, if you'd like to introduce yourself and your team.
Good evening and welcome. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson. We want to thank her for being here to capture our minutes on each of our meetings. I'd like to ask the remaining members of the core team to introduce themselves to you, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Good evening, everyone. Nick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing. Welcome.
Good evening, Curtis Kowits, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services.
Hi, I'm Debbie Piaz. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Welcome, I'm Beth Rale, Chief Academic and Innovation Officer.
Good evening, everyone. Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent, Student and Family Engagement.
All right, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is the adoption of the Agenda Approval of Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of the Agenda and, I'm sorry, adoption of the Agenda and approval of the Consent Agenda. Action item twenty-three, ten, seventeen.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, so Member Keo made the motion. I'm going to give that to Member Brooks. It was a close tie there. All right, Dr. Merritt, can you walk us through?
Yes, President Wilson. This evening, our Consent Agenda consists of human resources transactions. Since our last time together, we are continuing to hire champions for our district, so we have new hires for your consideration. We have leaves and resignations. We also have the approval of minutes from our regular meeting that was on September the twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. We have a few out-of-country field trips for your consideration. And for first reading of policies, we have Policy six-one-one-zero, that's grant funds. Policy six-three-two-five-point-zero-one, equity and purchasing and contracting responsible contractors. Policy seven-two-one-seven, weapons-free school zone. And finally, Policy seven-two-five-zero, naming new facilities, renaming existing facilities.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nope. All right, motion carries six to zero. Dr. Liz, will you walk us through leaves and resignations?
Absolutely. So I am very fortunate that I am going to introduce you to four new hires in our district who are all champions for our students. And when I say your names, stand up. We are so excited that you accepted a job in Plymouth Canton Community Schools. Malachi Bright. Malachi, oh, don't go, not yet. He is going to be our new mathematics intervention teacher at Erickson School. Welcome, Malachi. Carrie Chester is our new instructional coach at Dotson Elementary School. Welcome. Hafah Musa. Will you pronounce your last name, please?
Hafah Musa.
Hyphen Musa. She is going to be our new counselor at Salem High School, the home of the Rocks. Congratulations, welcome. And Sarah Tyler, she's not with us this evening. She is a new physics teacher at Plymouth High School. So welcome to our four new staff members. We are so happy you chose Plymouth Canton Community Schools, and we have a special gift for you if you want to come up. It's a candy bar to welcome you. Thank you.
All right, on to celebrating success with Member Brooks.
Okay, celebrating success this evening, we'll honor Ms. Ann Nora Harami, one of many amazing social studies students at Plymouth Canton Educational Park, who has gone above and beyond throughout her career to open students' eyes in important aspects of history. This past summer, Ms. Harami completed a national endowment for the humanities workshop focusing on the treatment of Asian-Americans and Native Americans during World War Two. The workshop titled Hart Mountain, Wyoming, and the Japanese-American incarceration was an immersive look at the incarnation or incarceration of one hundred and twenty thousand Japanese-Americans during World War Two at a relocation center like the Wyoming confinement site, which gave the workshop its name. The attendees explored the racism behind many government decisions and the settling of the American West, along with the related issues of the treatment of Native Americans. Ms. Harami spent time at the Hart Mountain site as part of the workshop goal to have educators experience American history where it happened. We are incredibly proud of Ms. Harami, that Ms. Harami was selected for this prestigious workshop, and excited that P C E P students will be able to learn about this important part of American history in a unique way. Derek Southwick, P C E P Assistant Principal, who works closely with the Social Studies Department, was not able to join us this evening, but he has written the following tribute about Ms. Harami and the positive impact teachers, teachers like her have on P C E P students. He says, "In all the years I have known Ann Nora, I have never known her to be anything but passionate. The causes she cares about are front and center in the way that she shows up in the classroom and in the world. Her passion and dedication to discussing historical topics are evident of students and colleagues alike. We are lucky to have someone this passionate about history in the P C E P Social Studies Department, and I'm so glad she is getting recognized tonight as the extra miler. It is well deserved. On behalf of Board of Education, I present Ann Nora Harami with the Mary Beth Carroll Extra Miler Award for going the extra mile to provide an enriching learning environment to P C P E students."
Would you like to say something?
Yeah, you'll let me? Thank you. Nice to meet you this way. Thank you. Veteran teacher, and I can be prepared without my glasses. I think font is big enough. I just wrote out a few thoughts. I would like to thank all of the board, of course, for this recognition, but also simply for my employment, the beautiful experience I have with my students in my twenty-third year. I knew Mary Beth Carroll. She's my friend. She wrote a key recommendation for me twenty years ago, which led to a scholarship from Toyota for their international teacher program. So in receiving this award in her name originally, it's especially satisfying and poignant. This past summer, I drove to photograph and researched three of the ten U.S. World War Two concentration camps for Japanese-Americans. Amachi in Colorado, Hart Mountain in Wyoming, and Minidoka in Idaho. Oh, boy. There were eighteen thousand Japanese-American men who served in the World War Two, famous and segregated four hundred forty-second regiment. If you know Tuskegee Airmen, and we should, think the same thing. The most decorated unit in U.S. military history for their size and duration. Four thousand Purple Hearts, four thousand Bronze Stars, five hundred and sixty Silver Stars, and twenty-one Medals of Honor. Only one Medal of Honor was awarded to a Japanese-American man during World War Two. That man and seven others not only served, not only were wounded, not only were killed in action, but were awarded the Medal of Honor, the highest military distinction from the United States for extreme valor and contribution, all but one posthumously. And they did this while coming from one of the concentration camps. Imagine, their medals were delivered to their parents in the concentration camps behind barbed wire, where they were still incarcerated because of Executive Order nine-zero-six-six, despite the extreme contribution, devotion, patriotism, and sacrifice of their sons. So I try to help students develop a far deeper understanding of citizenship, patriotism, the Constitution. This is not just a Japanese-American story. This is a story of any discriminated group that is starved for a chance to simply show, I am loyal, I am worthy, I am here, I can contribute, let me show you what I can do. Much.
Thank you. All right, on to committee reports. First up is the President's Report, which you should all have a copy of. This shouldn't take long. We can actually go to the next slide. We can go to the next slide. We've hit on that in the past. So obviously, tonight, we're focused on all P C C S students and staff will report they feel physically, psychologically, and emotionally safe and represented at school, so that's part of the presentation that we'll be receiving tonight, so looking forward to that. And then just to add to future agenda topics, at the last meeting, Board Member Christensen requested an update on the learner profile, so we'll be working to get that scheduled in. Next slide, please. Tonight is also the Board of Education Goals Discussion, as well as the next community, well, actually, before we go to the next community forum, would love to just get an update from the team that did the last community forum on September twenty-eighth.
Sure. So we had the community forum at Liberty Middle School. It was not a lot of people, but very good discussion and conversations that we had. We had representations from students across the district, especially at the high school level as well as the middle school level, but we also had parents of students at the elementary level, and we had a good conversation around how students can participate and add their, their voice into the work that we're doing as a district and the process. And I think we helped to educate people on that aspect of the dynamic plan and the work that we're doing there. We look forward to continuing to do more of these things, and perhaps we'll have more attendance in the future as well.
Fantastic. Thank you. Secretary Sedoo, would you like to talk about the next community forum?
Sure. The next community forum is coming up on October twenty-seventh, and I believe Diane, it was Erickson? Did we choose Erickson as a building? Great. It'll be at Erickson Elementary at six P M. on community engagement and family partnerships. So we'd love it if all of you that are in the audience and those that are watching would show up.
Fantastic. Thank you. And then last slide, just a couple shout-outs. First and foremost, at Bush's on Canton Center, for at least two to three weeks, I noticed, you know, some of our student athletes participating and leading a milk drive, and so I asked them if I could take a quick photo of them. I mean, I just, you know, it's one of those things, you know, where the impact that our schools have on the, on the community holistically is a beautiful thing, and, you know, here's this opportunity to just catch our students doing something good, right? And leaning in and giving back. And I won't say the number of gallons that, that I heard they, because I don't want to misrepresent the number, but it's in the thousands that they collected. They did a really good job, and I do know that they surpassed their, their goal. So congratulations to Canton Football Team and all of the student athletes that participated. And then I have my first interview on eighty-eight-one, the park, so, you know, I can check that off the bucket list. It was amazing, very professional. The interview was probably one of my toughest interviews ever. It was, it was really dynamic, but I was joined by some of the students from the Student Voice in Action Committee promoting that committee, and what you'll hear a little bit later is all of their marketing and promotion efforts really paid off, but I won't steal their, their thunder on that. So good stuff happening in the district. All right, next up, SPA with Secretary Sedoo.
Yes, we had a packed agenda, and I put some highlights up on the slide. You can feel free to reference those, look at them, but essentially, we reviewed the family engagement presentation, which you are all going to see tonight. Dr. Liz has done a fabulous job starting that new unit, and we're excited to see all the work that she's done and her team. We also looked at the new and revised courses that are going to be coming up for a full board approval in the, at the next meeting. I'm not going to read those off to you, but they're all listed. And the big topic was Starkweather Academy Program. It was really nice to see two parents come up and share their stories and their passion and their insights into how much their families have benefited from the Starkweather Academy Program. So the discussion was expanding it to grades nine through twelve. We've heard that from many families. So we had a really robust discussion. As you can imagine, there's a lot of work that needs to take place in looking at what that looks like with challenges and opportunities. So the team is going to be doing a deeper dive study and bringing it back to the SPA Committee with an analysis, and then we'll take it from there and see about next steps. But I want to thank everybody that was a part of that conversation and that discussion. The next item we had was High School Credit Recovery Program. I really appreciate the secondary staff principals and everyone that's working on looking at flexible opportunities for our students to gain credits. We know the last couple of years were really hard on so many students, and how do you attain those credits that were missed? So rather than having students just repeat the same thing semester after semester, especially when some students were three, four, or five credits behind. So I appreciate the staff looking at really intentional opportunities with flexibility to work with staff and students in looking at maximizing those opportunities. So that discussion was really robust. Again, Dr. Merritt, thank you for your staff for being thoughtful in looking at how do we help students gain those credits after, you know, such a really hard time with them. The last piece is the out-of-country field trips, which were on the Consent Agenda, and our next meeting is coming up on November second, I believe. It's the first Wednesday of each month. We will be here at five o'clock. Please join us.
Fantastic. Thank you. Next up, Policy with Member McCoyn.
Thank you. So we meet the second board meeting of the month, so we have not met since our last board meeting. We will be meeting the twenty-fifth, which is in two weeks from today, at five-thirty, and we meet all the way, we meet on this floor, go all the way down to the end, to the collaboration room, and that's where we will be. So we would welcome everybody to come on down, and I just want to point out that at the community forum, there was a parent there who was interested in becoming a community member on the Policy Committee.
The competition continues.
That's right.
Thank you. All right, Finance and Operations Committee with Member Key, Trustee Keo.
So I was actually not present at the last F and O meeting, and Trustee Christensen will provide the update and the details on the next one.
Yes. Okay, so we met in this room on October sixth, from five to six-thirty P M. There's a few items that we discussed that are actually are on the agenda this evening, one being the financial statements of year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. And then we also discussed the annual summer tax levy resolution, which is on tonight's agenda. And lastly, we talked about, we had a discussion over a one-time cost, property tax cost, due to our purchase of the Pilot Drive property. Our next meeting is October twentieth, in this room, from five to six-thirty. We'll be going over the twenty-one, twenty-two audit reports with Plant Moran, and we will also be with Mr. Brandon, talking about partnership audit findings. So there's a presentation from him. Please join if you can.
Thank you very much. On to Student Voice in Action Committee. That's the committee that I chair. We had our meeting yesterday and at Canton High School. Our next meeting is October twenty-fourth, six P M., same location, but to give a formal update, I'm going to turn it over to one of the committee members, Josh, or we call him Mr. Josh. Mr. Josh.
Hello. My name is Josh Patterson, and I'm a freshman at Plymouth. I'm a member of the Student Voice in Action Planning Committee. Applications closed yesterday at eleven fifty-nine P M., and we are happy to announce that we had sixty-seven people apply, surpassing our goal of forty. S V A members have been very busy lately. We attended both the coffee with Monica as well as the board community engagement session. Both were a major success. We're beginning to review the applications, and we will have memberships finalized by the thirty-first. Lastly, I would like to say thanks to all the board members, as well as Mr. Brandon, Ms. Wallace, and Dr. Liz, who have been mentoring all of us and really helping us to learn, prepare, and thrive. Thank you again.
Fantastic. Thank you, Josh. Education Excellence Foundation with Christina Johnson.
And good evening, everyone. I am going to take the honor here to introduce Christina Johnson to the Board of Education and our community. This is on behalf of E E F Chairman Dave Ripple and the rest of the E E F Board. So many of you might recall that Mr. Chris Kelly stepped into the role of Executive Director of the Educational Excellence Foundation earlier this year. Unfortunately, Mr. Kelly resigned his role with the E E F early last month due to some health concerns. The E E F's Executive Committee of the Board went into full recruitment mode upon hearing the news from Mr. Kelly, and after interviewing several candidates, we selected Christina Johnson for the full-time role. Today is Christina's seventh day on the job, and E E F Board couldn't be more thrilled to have her lead the foundation. Christina comes to us with more than twenty years of fundraising experience, most recently as a part of the fundraising team at Henry Ford Health System. Christina lives in Northville with her husband and five children, although she lived in Lake Point in Plymouth for more than ten years earlier in her life. I've had a chance to spend some time with Ms. Johnson, and I can tell you, on behalf of the entire E E F Board and the rest of our district, that the E E F is in very good hands with her as our new leader. So I'd like to welcome at this time, Ms. Christina Johnson, the new Executive Director of the E E F.
It's a little taller than I am. Well, Nick told you everything you need to know, didn't he? Again, I'm on day seven, so I won't be fielding too many questions this evening, but I am thrilled to be here. I've been Fund Development Director, as Nick said, for the last twenty-five years in the health sector, but really, I'm moving my passions toward education as I raise five school-aged children of my own in Northville. Please don't hold that against me. Big fan of Plymouth and happy to be back here in the community. It's been a little quiet from the E E F recently, and it's going to be a little quiet for a bit longer because we are ramping up for a relaunch of the foundation and some really exciting things happening that I can't wait to announce. And we, I'm really committed to making sure that we are funding our students and our teachers and this community in the way that I know the foundation has the capability of doing, and I think we're going to really make an impact that we haven't seen before from this foundation. Thank you so much for having me. Next board meeting, I'll be more prepared to answer detailed questions, and I hope to get a chance to have some one-on-one meet and greets with each of you. Thank you.
Please help me welcome Ms. Johnson once again. On to administrative reports and recommendations. First up, Superintendent Merritt.
All right. Thank you, President Wilson. As we all know, the number-one ingredient to students' success is having a quality teacher in front of them in the classroom. But not far behind is the number-two ingredient, I would say, and that's a strong principal, an instructional leader for our buildings. Please join me in celebrating, because it's National Principals Month, our amazing principals who are really standing in the gap and making a significant impact on the success of our students. Really thank our principals for being, being the guiding light for our schools. We're going to celebrate you all month long for your effort, your energy, your commitment, your passion for students. We want to ask our community to join us in this celebration, so we'll utilize our social media with the hashtag #ThinkAPrincipal, and if you just think about a principal that has made a difference in your life, either a current principal, or a past principal, or someone from your own journey or your educational journey, we just want you to pop into our social media and thank that principal. It really matters, the work that they're doing to provide these great experiences for our students, so we're very honored to celebrate them this month. I want to invite our community to be our guest at two amazing events that are coming up in the next couple of weeks. We have open house. It's still open house season, and the first one will be our open house for our specialized services. This is going to take place on October the thirteenth, from six to eight P M. in the Salem High School cafeteria. Parents will have the opportunity to explore a variety of agencies, companies, and resources located within the community to assist their children with special needs. There will be participants who focus on health and wellness, positive activities, such as camps, hobbies, activities, et cetera, and services in the community, and post-secondary support and options for our families. So I think this will be a great event, and we encourage all to attend. Also, we have another special opportunity. This is what I think people have been waiting for each year around this time. This is our opportunity for the P C E P Community Open House. This is an exciting time to open the doors to our unique gym at the park. That's, again, our three high schools on one campus. We don't know anyone like us, when we're doing wonderful things for students there at our high school campus. And so we want you to mark your calendar, Thursday. Did I get the right date? Is that November the third?
That's right.
All right. Thursday, November the third, from six to eight P M. This is also in the Salem High School cafeteria. And beyond the offerings and the activities that are explored that evening, you also have an opportunity to take a tour of the park. And I think, I remember many years ago, being a parent myself, when my two young ones were on their way to the park, even though I'm here in the district and I know how safe it is, I was still nervous as a parent to have my babies in my mind go to, to this huge fifty-eight. Now, I'm not going to say miles. Fifty-eight square foot campus. So having that opportunity early on to have, to take a tour of the facility and really see how we, our staff, really makes something that's so large just feel small and like home. And again, just a wealth of opportunities. So we want to invite our community to that open house on November the third. Finally, just, you'll hear a little bit more from our Office of Student and Family Engagement, but I want to continue to highlight the presentation series. Session two is going on next week. This event will shine a much-needed light on anxiety with the must-see documentary, Angst. This film is great appropriate for grades seven and up, and a parent must accompany the student. After the viewing, a panel of mental health professionals will be on hand to answer questions and offer more resources and opportunities for support. And I continue to thank that amazing department for the work that they're doing to continue to help our leaders and our staff support our students and our community. This presentation is going to take place, again, Monday, October seventeenth, six P M. This is at the Penn Theater. We continue to thank our partners at the Penn Theater for opening their doors and allowing these events free of charge to our community. For any questions, our inquiries, please see the Student and Family Engagement at P C C S twelve dot com email. That's it for me today.
Fantastic. Thank you. Superintendent Merritt, I'm going to take a quick moment to thank a principal, and then I'll do it on social media as well. So Principal Corey Johnson at Workman Elementary, just amazing. Although we don't have any, my, my family no longer have children, at, at Workman, I mean, she was just amazing and definitely does, to your point, make a huge, huge difference, even so much so that, you know, my eleven-year-old who just left constantly talks about going back to visit her. So really, really amazing educator and amazing leader, so. And I would, I would encourage all the board members to take to social media and let's, you know, let's lead by example, right? Thank you, principals. So thank you for that.
Awesome.
All right, on to Student and Family Engagement with Dr. Liz Vartanian Gibbs.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and I'm Dr. Liz Vartanian Gibbs, and I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Student and Family Engagement, and I'm very excited to share with you everything that we are doing in our department.
And I'm very excited to share with you everything that we are doing in our department. So just give me one moment. Our work focuses on all of the strategic goals in the dynamic plan, but this evening I'm going to share with you how strategic goal B, C, and E are represented in the Department of Student and Family Engagement. So Goal B is all Plymouth Canton Community Schools. Students and staff will report they feel physically, psychologically, and emotionally safe and represented at school. The department is comprised of talented, dedicated, and enthusiastic staff members. If you are present this evening, could you please stand and be recognized when I share your name? We have Patrice Williams, our nurse manager. Kathy Grotes, our psychologist, school health manager. Ciara Marshall, our nurse specialist. Jennifer Beck and Eric Stamper, Student and Family Engagement Teacher Specialist. Anhala Rincon, Avery Stevenson, and Lillian Lucas Jones are our family liaisons. The terms "parent" and "family" are used interchangeably and refer to any adult caregiver or group of caregivers who play a primary role in the child's development. This includes grandparents, foster parents, guardians, and extended family members. The goals of our department are aligned to the strategic goals, objectives, and action steps in the dynamic plan. And our goals are: honor and recognize the roles families play in their students' educational experiences; foster a culture of equity through capacity building; connect family engagement to student success; create a PCCS Family Academy to empower families to support students; facilitate family engagement programs that are systemic, diverse, integrated, and sustained; and act as an advocate and partner to support students and their families. So we were establishing our Y. And district data from the Case 12 Insights Survey as well as the SR3 Fund Survey and national data help us to establish our Y and that is why we made a decision to have the Department of Student and Family Engagement. Our staff indicated a need for increased mental health support for students and staff and that is aligned to strategic Goal B in our dynamic plan. 26% of our families would like an increase in student resources and support systems, which is aligned to strategic Goal C in the dynamic plan. And 31 of the respondents who completed the SR3 Fund Survey indicated family engagement is a high priority. National data indicates that when a child's outcome improves considerably, when schools and families collaborate on an individual children's needs, goals, programs, and progress. Our purpose is to develop and implement opportunities for students, parents, guardians, caregivers, schools, and communities to work together to create meaningful partnerships that ultimately lead to improved student outcomes academically, socially, and emotionally. We are collecting baseline data this school year. One of the long-term goals is to increase student success, student achievement, and improve attendance rates. Another long-term goal is to have stronger communities with all families thriving. Historically, we have provided services for our families at the building level as well as the district level through the McKinney-Vento Act. Now employees of our school district can refer a student or family for wraparound services by completing the Google form that we have developed. They complete the Google form, they share it with my department. I review all forms and I assign a member of the department to the family. We contact the family, we discuss what services that would support them. We provide the services and then we follow up with the family. And you can see the list of services that we are able to provide. Another piece of our work are the Family Academy sessions. The following Family Academy sessions are scheduled. We have the Genius Play, October 12th and 18th. Angst, which Dr. Merritt already discussed, would be taking place at the Penn Theater on October 17th. We're having a Family Academy session on academic enrichment. We have a vaccination clinic scheduled October 27th and health and nutrition presentations on November 3rd. So we have partnered with many community groups such as Blue RX Pharmacy, Save Our Youth Foundation, the Insights Institute, the Quanis Club has donated $1,000 for toiletry kits. We have set up five additional food pantries with the Salvation Army at our schools. We have partnered with the University of Michigan Nursing Department to bring student nurses into our schools to work with our current school nurses. And we also have partnered with Western Wayne County Suicide Prevention Coalition. Our work supports the Michigan Integrated Continuous Improvement Process of the whole child. The Michigan Department of Education has defined the whole child as a unique learner comprised of interacting dimensions such as cognitive, physical, behavioral, social, and emotional. And the whole child lives in many environments, including home, school, and community, and it's so important to connect all those environments. The engagement team will spend a day at each school in our district. We work with students and staff during our visit. We also facilitate a discussion with the leadership team on how we can support their work in the school improvement plan. It is because of the amazing team that I have that we can work together and make all of this take place. This work was done with all of them. I'm just helping them, supporting them, and leading with them. So connecting with students and their families is the work of our department and I thank you for allowing us to share all of this with you this evening.
Thank you. We'll open it up to questions, starting to my right. Member Chastain.
Kristiansen.
All right. You're doing it now. I'm used to it. I don't have any questions per se. Just a comment, you know, I think this is really robust, kind of right out the gate and I'm very, very excited to see how many community events we're having. I've heard, you know, there's been great attendance at the first one, so I'm really excited to see what's to come. And I hope to be able to attend some of these myself. So thank you for all of your hard work, everybody.
So I would echo those comments. I'm very excited to see how quickly this program has gotten up and how the outreach that's already happening in the community. So this is, the things that we've discussed as part of the dynamic plan and I love seeing those things into action. And I love how you've also wrapped around all the other parts of the district as part of this process. So I recognize the leadership that occurs in this particular team, but really it's the whole district that's working together to support this process and bringing these programs forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I have no questions. We discussed this in deep discussion, so thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Just two quick questions. So for long-term sustainability, so first of all, I'll echo what, you know, my colleague said. Amazing, great presentation. You know, love partnerships that you're establishing and how that's helping to carry out the work. The team that you've built seems like an amazing team, so, you know, kudos on all of the above. Two, I guess really more thoughts and one thought, one question is, long-term sustainability from a funding standpoint, is there an opportunity as EEF is reimagining itself? Is there an opportunity to look at long-term how, you know, you can help to sustain this work through foundations and corporations funding things of that nature?
Yes, there is. And I will be working with EEF once the new leadership gets established as well as all of our community partners that are helping us to sustain this department by providing us donations. And I know that Mr. Brandon is going to share the community partnership audit very, very soon and you will see how both of our departments are working together to support each other in the work of the district.
Perfect. And then the question is honing in on increased student long-term goals. Understanding that you're setting baseline data, are there specific data points that you're looking at now that will help indicate if you're moving the needle on student achievement?
So we are going to be looking at NWA fall scores for our K-8 students. We'll be looking at the spring scores for PSAT as well as the grade level class scores for 11th and 12th graders. And those are all, that's all the data teaching and learning is looking at. So we'll be working in partnership with Beth Rail's department to look at that data and to see the improvement over time.
Fantastic. Member Brooks?
I think it's a great thing that we're doing with the Student Engagement and Family Engagement because it helps everybody know what each other are doing. And the more knowledge we have with that, the better it works.
Thank you.
Member McCoy?
Thank you so much. This is really helpful information. I really like how it's like the resources, the activities. I like kind of the standardized form. I think it's really easy to then follow along with what you're doing. I also like seeing the wraparound services kind of housed in one place so that they're not just everywhere. Thank you for all this work. It looks amazing. Really excited to see this work go.
So thank you. I appreciate the support of this Board of Education, everyone that works in this district for funding the department and supporting us and my amazing team. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. Now we're looking at a presentation from Wayne County Suicide Prevention Coalition Updates.
Yes, we thought it was appropriate this evening as you heard Dr. Vartanian Gibbs speak about our partnership with the Western Wayne County Suicide Prevention Coalition and really in alignment with our strategic goal that we're focusing on, strategic goal B. As I heard from my dear friend and former colleague, Mr. Brian Galdes. He is the former superintendent of South Redford School District. He's enjoying his retirement right now. Looks amazing and relaxed. He reached out to talk about an update, so we thought this was timely to bring this this evening. So I'd like to introduce, again, Brian, to you also, Ms. Cindy Malik, Suicide Prevention Coordinator at Growth Works. And there's no introduction needed for our own amazing Kathy Grotes, who's our psychologist and mental health manager. So unfortunately, when you think about suicide, it is, it is one of the leading causes of death in young children as well as, I think, through age 30s, early 30s. We at PCCS have been impacted by completed suicides of students over the years. And so this board, as well as our team, really talked about a focus on making sure that we can get out in front of and be more preventative and aware. And so entering this coalition was an important step. And so I'll turn it over to you to just kind of give us an update on the progress.
Well, thank you, Monica. I appreciate that introduction and I didn't think, I just graduated, I just retired in August. I didn't think I'd be in front of a board again this early, but I'm certainly happy to be here. As Monica said, I'm Brian Galdes, former superintendent of South Redford Schools. And we're here today representing a coalition of school districts and organizations that have a goal, a single goal, to have zero completed suicides in seven school districts. And the reason that how this came about was I was asked to be on a strategic planning committee with St. Mary's Hospital. And we started that work by doing a survey, a community survey about health needs. And the number one need that came back by far was mental health. And so being, being an educator, I kind of championed the idea that we really needed to look at adolescent depression and suicide prevention. And the, so St. Mary's wanted to look at their catchment area, of course, because that's what they were interested in. And so the district that surrounded them was South Redford, Redford Union, Plymouth Canton, Northville, Levonia, Garden City, and Wayne Westland. And so that's, that's the catchment area and those are the seven districts that we're looking at. And really, if you look at those seven districts, it's a largest group of students, about 66,000 students in the state of Michigan that we're representing. And then this work started about, about seven years ago. As Monica had mentioned, the suicide is actually the second-leading cause of adolescent deaths. And it's actually, used to be third about five years ago, but it surpassed, I'm not sure what it surpassed, but it surpassed the second-leading one. And it's the only cause of death in the top 10 leading causes of death in the United States that is rising. Every other cause of death is in decline. And, and this is, these statistics are kind of pre-COVID also. And so we anticipate that COVID hasn't been, you know, the best time for our adolescents, for sure. So, so if we truly believe, and I do believe we can get to zero completed suicides, it's going to take a whole village. It's going to take everybody. And, and so we decided that we can't do this alone. We can't work as individual school districts. There isn't a school district in the seven I named that hasn't experienced at least one completed suicide by an active student. And I would, I would bet that there isn't a soul in this room who hasn't been impacted by a suicide of some sort, either family member or extended friend network. And so, so we all know it's out there. We know it's something we have to address. But what gets in the way is the stigma and the fact that nobody wants to talk about it. And, and I get it. People, you know, it's a tough thing to talk about. Families have their, you know, their, you know, the reasons for not talking about it, I guess. I actually very recently had an opportunity to talk to a current legislator who's, who's, you know, about, was about as high up in the legislature as you can get. And that person told me a story because we were talking about this. And he said he's never talked about this in his entire life and he's in his 60s. His brother, when he was in middle school, his brother tried to complete suicide. They shared a room. And the parents rushed the brother to the hospital, came home and, and the next day, sent both of the brothers to school the next day. Never, ever did the parents ever talk to, at least him, about what happened. And, and the trauma that he, you know, that he experienced that was pretty dramatic. And so much so that he hasn't been able to talk about it. And so, so when I tell that story to educators, they're not surprised. Again, we have so many kids who come into our buildings every single day who have experienced such trauma. And, and, you know, we don't know about it. And, and, so, so that stigma and that, that not having the conversation about, about depression and suicide is something that is going to be a big hurdle for us. Again, that's why it's going to take the whole community. We have to, we have to start talking about it. And so the seven districts are really working hard to come together and, and work, work hand-in-hand on this instead of working in silos with each district. We're also, in the part of the collaboration group is St. Mary's Hospital, of course, Higera, New Hope Center, and then Growth Works, which is right here in Plymouth. And they're playing a very large part in this. So, so as we go forward in this work, we've, we've been working on this for about seven years. And I'd like to point out that Kathy Grotes has been a leader in this work with us for as long as we've been around. And so she was one of the first ones that came to, to one of our first events and then, and then has been with us the whole time. So, so we really appreciate the work that she's been doing with us. And so, so the way we are trying to get together is to have the special ed directors from each of the district come together on a monthly basis and, and work together to, to address the issues. Well, as you know, everybody has a full plate and a lot of times you would leave the meeting, including myself. We would leave the meeting and the world hits us. And so one day I was talking to Nick Griswold, the CEO of Growth Works, and he said, well, what do you need? What do you need to make this thing go? We need to make this thing go. So we need someone whose sole purpose is to work on this. No other responsibilities, nothing else going except for this. It's that important. And he said, done. So he worked with, with St. Mary's Hospital. They wrote some grants and kicked in some of their own money. And they, we were able to get that person. And that person was standing behind me. It's actually Cindy Malik. And, and so she's going to talk a little bit about where the coalition is right now and, and, you know, some of the visions for moving forward. So certainly thank, I appreciate the time on the agenda to, to let you know what we're doing.
Hi, good evening. This is a familiar room to me. I am a Cherry Hill Village Workman Elementary School resident. And also I worked for Wayne County recently. I worked for this board for several years through HISG with Leonard, so it's nice to be back. So like Brian, being retired, that didn't last long for me either. And for anybody considering it, don't answer your phone. But this work is very passionate and it's been an absolute privilege to be working with Growth Works. And as a former building administrator and central office administrator, I wish I And as a former building administrator and central office administrator, I wish I would have known about a lot of the resources that are available in Wayne County, particularly in these seven school districts. It would have been very helpful to me as a principal to know that New Hope Grief Center was available to us in, in Northville. Did not know that until I started working and supporting this work for Growth Works. The Flynn Foundation, St. Mary's, now Trinity Hospital and Growth Works have come together to not only support the position that I'm in, but to help get our, our folks trained in a QPR process for suicide prevention. So in front of you, I passed out a couple of flyers. The first one says, "Community Suicide Prevention." It's orange on the front. Our goal is that we are to train, as Brian said, we have a catchment of 66,000 students. That involves 6,500 adults who are working with these students. And when we talk about the staff, we talk about anybody who draws a check. It's not just the teachers. When I was a, my best people to go to were my bus drivers and my lunch monitors. They knew my kids inside and out. And they're the people that I could depend on to say, hey, what's going on with so and so? Or they would come to me to say, hey, you need to know. So our nurses, our secretaries, our bus drivers, our parapros, our SROs, anybody in the district that call, that is drawing a check is going to be trained in QPR for all seven school districts. We are keeping track of this. We are just about at the 3,000 mark out of the 6,500. I came on with Growth Works at the end of January. Last year, we put a plan in place and we hit the ground running. We have trainers in every one of these school districts, we have training teams. And so they're the ones who are going into staff meetings, half-day PD days, they ran some summer things to get the teachers trained. We have a third shift in one of the school districts that come on for the cleaning crew. We're doing a training for them in November. We're starting at 10 o'clock at night with pizza and salad. We're going to do the training to make sure that we can get all of the folks on that shift trained. So we're really being flexible with our time to get everybody trained. This event on November 8th is going to be at the St. John's Resort, formerly known as the Inn of St. John's. And this is a repeat of what we did in June. So on June 27th, we trained 280 people at the inn. And on November 8th, we're going to do it again. And so we're inviting new teachers who have been hired, because many of your teachers have already been trained, so new teachers are coming, and also non-teaching staff to this. We also would like to open the invitation to all of you. Many of the school boards, this is, I think, our fourth board meeting. Brian says he hasn't been before a board. We bet, we were at two last night. So we're inviting the boards to attend, to be part of this because we also would like all of you to be trained in the QPR process. The training itself is about 90 minutes, but we're going to make it a day. So we have Matt Immersion coming in from Every Monday Matters. Matt has a story that he shares, and I'm not going to take away his thunder, but he is a gentleman who grew up in Hollywood, very famous parents. His babysitter was Kim Kardashian. And he had everything until he didn't. And that's where his story begins. So he'll be with here, with us that, actually that entire week, and I'll get to that in a second. And then also Gail Neely Colvex coming in from Springfield, Illinois Schools, and she's a trauma expert. So we'll have two keynotes in the morning, we'll have a fantastic lunch, and then after that, we'll have about a 90-minute session of training so that everybody becomes what's called, considered a gatekeeper. So again, the registration can go through Kathy or Liz's office, and the information is here on this form. If you flip to the other side, I am not a mental health professional, but I am a staff developer. So if we're going to throw a party, we're going to do a big one on one day because November 8th is a professional development day for the entire county. So for Western Wayne County Mental Health Conference, that's going to be also on November 8th, and that is for our mental health professionals within these seven school districts. We have gone to great lengths to make sure that our social workers, our counselors, our interventionists, those who hold different licenses, not only teaching that they get credit for sketches, we also went through the process to make sure that we could be certifying their day in CE's for their credits, which as a former person who had to do that stuff in a school district, I understand why districts don't do that process. It's not easy. It took us three months to become a certified, and now Growth Works is licensed for that. But we're going to honor those people for their profession and give them training in their day. So it's not only QPR, but they'll be hearing from all the different mental health agencies here in Wayne County, particularly Western Wayne County, that can support the work that they do. They will also be hearing Matt Immersion at the very end of the day. So Matt's going to be moving, moving and shaking as he goes through, through that week with us. So again, we're inviting all your mental health professionals to join us at Schoolcraft College on November 8th as well. And again, Kathy and Liz's office are handling those registrations. The third thing that we're doing, since we have Matt here that week, and there is such an emphasis on starting the conversation, not only with all, all of those who are in our school community, but also with the families. So again, very generously, the Penn Theater has opened to their doors. And so the evening of November 9th, which is Wednesday, we're going to be doing a Family Matters event, and that is the second flyer that I gave you. And Matt will be the keynote for that. It's a one-hour presentation. Doors will open up a half an hour beforehand, and then Matt will give, have a, have his conversation. This is not meant for students, this is meant for the adults, so we're not inviting kids to this. Again, we'll have door prizes, we'll do some raffles that we've had sponsorship with. He will be repeating these talks in Redford, at the Redford Library, on Thursday morning at 10:30 to 11:30. And the Redford Youth Commission has sponsored that. They've stepped up to sponsor that, and they're providing a breakfast and a luncheon, a lunch to go at the end of that. And then that evening at John Glenn High School in Wayne Westland, Matt will also be presenting the, the same thing. Again, as you can see here, he's, his work's been hailed by Oprah and the Today Show and Hallmark and other media outlets. He's, if you have an opportunity to hit any one of those events to see Matt, he is well worth it. I've worked with him through the Michigan Elementary and Middle School Principals Association and the State and Federal Programs Association. He's a guy to see. So if you have the opportunity, and Growth Works is picking up the tab on this, $100,000 into this. And it is something that is near and dear to their hearts, and we're hoping to continue in future years, the Mental Health Conference. This will be the end of the QPR training because the districts now have their own teams. So I'm going to turn it over to Kathy.
Thanks. I want to give you a brief update on what Plymouth Canton is doing. So as Brian said, I've been with the Wayne Western Suicide Coalition for about seven years. And through this committee, Plymouth Canton Schools has developed important partnerships with Growth Works, Higera, and New Hope Center for Grief, who have provided our students and families and staff with grief support. Our district has a goal, and our goal is to train all staff by June of 2023 using the QPR Suicide Prevention Training. As of date, we have trained about 450 elementary teachers, 360 middle school teachers, and 350 high school teachers. On November 8th, we will be offering this training again for all staff. QPR stands for Question, Persuade, and Refer. It meets the requirement of the National Registry that, based on practices and policies. It teaches how to recognize early warning signs of suicide, how to persuade and refer somebody to get help. But the most important message it gives is that there is hope and there is support out there that can help. We are currently planning, in the planning stages with the Health and the PE Department to start training our students on the QPR student version. I would like to take this time to thank our partners with Growth Works and Higera and New Hope and all the mental health agencies that has partnered with Plymouth Canton Schools to help support us. I also want to thank Monica Merritt and the board members, Dr. Merritt, and the board members for all your support on these crucial matters. These matters affect our students and our families and the community, so thank you for all you do.
Does anyone have any questions?
I have a couple. First of all, thank you for this presentation and for really putting this coordinated effort forward in, in a place where there's so much needed. So Brian, you know, as you mentioned, what is at stake here? And you're right, it takes a village, so I appreciate all of you pulling those pieces together to create this. So my questions are, for the first one, when the November 8th session, if you are not available on that date, is there another session that we could attend?
So a couple of things that other school boards have asked us to do is to provide a workshop. So we can workshop. I know that both Redford Union and South Redford Schools are going to do a workshop for their board, but those boards are also going to invite their PTA and PTO boards to attend with them. We do have a maximum held by the QPR Institute. We can only have 30 people in a training at a time. We can't go ahead. So if we get above that, then we'll bring in two training teams to do that. So the answer is yes, we can make those arrangements. Also, each school building, or each of Kathy's teams, they'll be offering it throughout the year to catch up anybody who's a new hire, you know, along the way, you know, in any department. So there may be other opportunities that way also.
Great. My last question is about all of the training that's happening. So great goal to have all staff trained by June 2023, and it looks like you're on your way to achieving that. So I heard a QPR student version, is there a QPR family version that will be taking place?
There's a QPR parent version, and we are working with the parents right now to coordinate that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, so I love this, this program, and I know that there's been a lot of things that we've looked at from this perspective. It's been something that's weighed heavily on the administration, the district, the board. And I really appreciate this complete comprehensive program that's coming forward, and especially the really aggressive timelines, because we saw timelines in the past that were spanning multiple years. So, you know, June 2023, love, love that answer. My other question related to that, though, is what becomes part of our continuous process? We have new staff that's coming onboard every single board meeting. How do we make sure that every one of those staff is trained right away?
So I'm an instructor, so I, I am working with our HR department for all new hires to come on that I will schedule training for them.
Okay, so they won't go for a year or anything like that? We'll get them?
Now, and also, we've partnered with Wayne County RISA, and so we have a training team at RISA that offers it too.
Okay.
So we're, we're covering it locally, but we're also covering it, you know, around the county so that any school that needs it. There also is an alternative piece, and there is an online version that you can take also. There's just a cost associated with that.
So Liz, I know this isn't your current value. What is our goal from an HR perspective of how quickly do we want to make sure new hires are going through this? And if you don't know, that's fine. I don't want to put you on the spot.
So I'm going to assume, because we hired Shante, this wonderful Chief Human Resource Officer, that I already know that her and Kathy have been working together extensively to get this done as soon as possible.
Yeah, so we have 30 new hires signed up for November 8th.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? All right, thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, on to finations with Deborah Pieg.
Just don't ask me any financial questions. Sorry.
It's okay. I'm a W. D. B. Y.
Good evening. I am the warm-up act to Plant Moran. So annually, we give you a little bit of background information on the general fund operation and the results of the operations through June 30, 2022 this time, so that when Plant Moran comes, they're talking about their audit processes and procedures and giving you some other information. So tonight I'm going to give the same presentation I did at FNO, and then you will hear a great presentation from Plant Moran at FNO on the 20th, and then they'll come and do the full Board of Education on the 25th. And this all culminates into the FID, which we call the Financial Information Database, which is a requirement for all districts in the state of Michigan, and that is due on November 1st, making this time sensitive. So again, my contribution to the dynamic plan in this case is A and E. And so as we talked about it earlier, we'll increase achievement for all students and close the achievement gap, and we'll talk about student learning and growth through sound financial practices. So we have sound financial practices, and that can lead us to the alignment of those resources to the fit, areas of greatest need as identified by the Teaching and Learning Department. And so our financial statements really do fit the model that all the resources we use, federal, state, and local, move into the activities that we talk about in the annual audit. And then the outputs are those audit reports and those financial results that then get us to an unqualified and clean opinion, as well as no findings or question cause, and then allow us to do the FID, and then allow us to then look at our long-term outcomes to include those, to align those resources to the areas of greatest need as identified by the Teaching and Learning Department under their academic achievement data, and then arrange those budgets to have that alignment. So in the general fund revenues, and again, tonight I'm just going to speak about the general fund. We'll get an all funds view next time up. The local source revenues, these, these different labels on the left-hand side of the page are prescribed by the Bolton 1022. It's the accounting manual for the state of Michigan. Local source revenue primarily is the 18 mills of non-homestead taxable property taxes that is paid from commercial properties within the district. The state source revenue is governed by the foundation allowance, and since 1994, the foundation allowance currently is $8,700 per full-time equivalent student. It's by the membership state aid. So that total is really the ceiling. And so the 18 mills is assumed, and then the state sources is the rest. And so that is, for our district, 16,394 FTEs at 8,700 gives you the state source revenue in excess of $138 million. Federal source revenue here is just the general fund, so it's just Medicaid, it's not those ESR funds that we've talked about in other board meetings. That's accounted for in a different fund, the Funded Projects Fund. Inter-district sources is the enhancement millage, the Wayne County RISA county-wide enhancement millage. And then transfers to another funds are those that support the other funds from the general fund. So a total, grand total, total revenue actual is over $185 million in the general fund. The expenditures are also prescribed by the Bolton 1022 manual, and these are the labels given. Basic programming is elementary, middle, and high school, added needs, special ed, comp ed, and voc ed. And so those total about $112 million. And then our supporting services do have a lot of direct contact with students. So pupil support, as we just heard a presentation from Dr. Varkanyan Gibbs and her staff, that's psych and speech and social workers. Instructional support are our media specialists. General support, general admin is the Board of Education and the core team. School admin is all the principals and all their leadership groups. Maintenance and operations includes our large contract with ABM Consortium Services, as well as all the utilities, electric, gas, water, and sewer of the district. Transportation includes Durham School Services, as well as all the fuel for all the buses, both propane, diesel, and gas, regular gas. And the central support services includes the technology and pupil accounting of the district. School activities, community services, the facility improvement this year was large because that's the purchase of the Educational Support Center at Pilot Drive. And so, and then the non-voted debt service is leases, if we had any, and the 2010 QSCUBs, which is the Qualified School Construction Bonds that we have outstanding still. So that totals $78.4 million. We had no transfers. This is the same expenditures I just discussed, but on an object level. So this is the what kinds of those expenditures. Salary and benefits, obviously, is the largest component because it's a service industry. We're a service-based school district. And so like all other districts, this is the majority of our expenditures. And this allows us to continue to offer quality staff, quality wages, and fringe benefits of $158.7 million. Purchased services are those things we pay for as a contract or contracted services. And I talked about those earlier, that's the ABM contract and the Durham contract and other contracts we have district-wide, that's 18.3 million. The supplies and materials includes not only textbooks, but all the supplies that we have throughout the, the district, as well as utilities. Unfortunately, that's where that is labeled and where it goes under the FID. The capital ally and equipment I talked about, that was the purchase of the Educational Support Center at Pilot Drive. And then there's other expenditures, and that's the non-voted bond. So a total expenditures over $190.5 million. And so this gives you the snapshot of where we are at the end of June 30, 2022. Total revenues in excess of $185.5 of $185.5 million. Total expenditure is $190.5, so a planned use of fund equity of just under $5 million, giving us a resulting ending fund balance of about $40.9 million or about 21.5 percent. The Department of Treasury says 5 percent is a minimum amount. The Board of Education adopted a fund equity policy of 10 percent, and our auditors recommend annually about 15 to 20. So we're well within those parameters. If you want to think about the use of the fund equity, you can think about it as two major factors. It's the purchase of the Educational Support Center at Pilot Drive. In addition, a little bit over $500,000 in, we'll call it unrealized revenue, because our ESSR award was dated July, and that June, we're not allowed to recognize that expenditure in the federal programs fund. We have to recognize it in the general fund because we did spend it. But what's going to happen is then in the following year, '22, '23, we will then reverse that, and you'll recognize it in the federal project. So basically, a timing difference between '22 and '23. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. We'll start to the right.
We talked about this extensively at FNO, so I don't have any questions. Thank you.
So just some questions for the people in the audience, both here and at home. This is a planned use of fund balance. So we're used our fund balance last year. We're using it again this year. We're doing that to support the programs that we're doing to make sure that we improve our educational outcomes for our students. Can you remind us again what is approximately our planned use of fund balance for this year? I think it was another 6 million.
I think it was 6.5.
Yeah, 6.5, okay. So the message to everyone here on the board and in the audience is not sustainable. You know, we're using our piggy bank to make sure that we can support the programs that we think really matter to us, and that those are really important things that we can do. But unless the funding situation changes within the state, we will not be able to continue this long term, and that will cause some harm for us. All the great programs that we heard earlier, many of those things are being supported by this planned use of fund balance, and, you know, we just need to be conscious of that. The other thing that I wanted to point out is I think this was the last year of the old formula for the recent millage. So the $12 million that we got this last fiscal year is not what we'll get going forward. If I remember correctly, it's about 8 million?
I think it's 5 or 6. I think it's much lower, so.
6 to 7 right now.
Yep. Yeah, it's 7 right now. It's going to 5.8, I believe.
Okay, got it, yeah. So we will lose some funding from that perspective, just because of the funding formula. The previous formula for the regional enhancement millage was for traditional public schools. The new formula includes the charter schools as well, so that those funds are being distributed more broadly.
Right. And I also want to point out, the Board of Education has to adopt their budget prior to the state deciding what their state school aid is going to be. So we adopted our budget at $435 per full-time equivalent student. What ended up being passed by the legislature was 450, so a little bit of betterment there. There's also several categoricals that were adopted after the fact for safety and security, mental health, as well as special education and other services. So more to come on that. We'll know more in about a month about what that really means, but some more categorical aid is coming our way. Not enough, the School Research Collaborative said we should be funded about $10,194 per full-time equivalent student, and we're at 8,700 going to 9,150. So still not enough. And I don't want to make the Dr. Merritt upset, but 8,700 minus the $10,194 that it's supposed to be, at our size, would be about $28 million. So, no, we're nowhere near where we should be funded.
Okay. And that has a lot to do, when we talk about things like class sizes and other things like that, unless you, it costs, if I remember correctly, about $1.8 million for every student reduction in class size across the district. So if you want to have a meaningful reduction in class size, we need that $28 million.
Correct.
Thank you. I wanted to echo Member Kehoe's comment about that this is not sustainable. So my question is, were there discussions about increasing revenue beyond what we are asking from the state or what we could hope from the state? There are conversations about increasing student school of choice program? How do we bring in more students? Were there discussions about those things?
I don't think we talked about that specifically in this last session. You know, this is more about the standard process that we do, but it is a conversation that we oftentimes have, and one that we're having at the whole board level, is where does our marketing program? How do we capture the students that are in our district but not attending our schools? We believe that we offer the best programs, and so both how do we promote those programs, but also how do we target those families that are not attending PCCS? So I think that we've got some more discussions that we'll have on that front going forward.
Okay. Maybe it's an agenda item. I can work with the FNO committee or the whole board with regard to a plan of increasing student enrollment. I know Dr. Liz's group has targeted that as a goal, so, yeah, I'd like to hear more about short-term and long-term progress of that. All right, thank you.
Member Brooks?
Nothing at this time.
Member McCoyn?
No. They got it all with the not sustainable funding at this point.
Yeah, no questions from me.
Thank you so much for the time. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
All right, where are we? Are we at citizens' comments?
The two action items.
Two action items. All right. Action item 231018, consider approval of resolution for a network storage purchase. Final reading.
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for network storage purchase. Action item 231018, final reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
So Member Kehoe moves. Member Brooks, second. Any further discussion? This is the final reading.
So we had previously discussed at the last board meeting, there were some questions about the technology. I think we got those all answered there. So if there's any other questions, we can certainly cover them. But it was discussed extensively in FNO, as well as in the last board meeting.
All right. I'll call for a vote. Call in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nope. All right. Pass is 6-0. Action item 231019, consider approval of resolution, summer property tax first and final reading.
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution, summer property tax levy. Action item 231019, first and final reading.
Second.
All right. Motion by Member Kehoe, seconded by Member Brooks. Discussion?
Ms. Piaz, can you kind of just explain to the board and the community what this is? This is something we do regularly.
Yes. On an annual basis, this Board of Education adapts this property tax levy resolution in order to collect 100% of your tax revenues in July. So typically, other districts cut that in half and do half on July 1 and half on December 1, but that does really cause a cash flow issue, because as I just stated, the state aid only comes in 11 payments from October 20 through August 20 of the following year. So in order to not have that cash flow issue, if you have 100% of your tax collections in July, then you can accumulate some revenue in order to pay teachers in the months of August and September, in the first part of October, before you get your first state aid payment on October 20.
And we've done this for the last, kind of, long time.
Forever.
Yeah.
Long time.
But we do have to reauthorize it every year.
Yep, every year.
Any further discussion? Call in favor say yes.
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 Any opposed, say nope. All right, pass is 6-0. Onto citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments? There are no citizens' comments. So we'll move on to discussion items. Let's see, first and foremost, future agenda topics. I think we covered that.
We have, we had two future agenda topics from the last meeting. One was the learner profile, so we're tentatively looking at bringing that to the October 25 meeting as an update to our community. And then the second one was staffing, and we're going to talk a little bit about that this evening.
All right. Subcommittee Community Member Application Discussion. It closes the 14th?
So we have, yeah, we have a discussion. So the Student Voice in Action did launch the community member. That application process closes on October 14. The three remaining committees, we need to, three remaining committees, we need to communicate. We'd like to be able to have a big splash tomorrow and open up that window. Now, we talked about this initially at FNO, and we agreed upon an FNO beginning tomorrow, and we would leave that window open until the end of the month, October 28. We heard then from Policy Committee saying that they would like to mirror that, so we would do that as well. So if we can confirm for SPA, that would be wonderful for consistency. We can get out there tomorrow, leave the window open for the 28th.
Yes.
Yes.
And so just as a reminder for the community and those here at home, we have these subcommittees that help support a lot of the work that you see here in these public meetings. And those are public meetings as subcommittees, but we generally only have three board members, but we invite between two and three community members to also be a part of that committee to make sure we can get input from the community as part of that process. And so this is our activity to solicit those community members to submit their desire to attend, and we'll go through a selection process to identify those interested parties to try to select those two to three members of that process.
Mr. Kehoe, can you tell us and the community, how long does a community member typically serve on a committee?
So I don't remember. We say it was two years. I think it's two years. So we've had some community members that have been there for longer than two years, which is great.
They love it so much.
We've had lots of good institutional knowledge and continuity in that process, but it is a two-year term.
Can I add one other piece that, if you're watching, for those in the audience? The time commitment is generally one meeting a month for most committees, except for FNO, which is?
Two meetings a month.
And meetings generally last about an hour and a half to two hours each time. So for those that are wondering, you know, do you have the time? I think if you could pull out an hour and a half a month, that would be great. So please join us. Your input is so necessary in this process.
And even those community members that are not selected or are part of the committee, we always welcome you to come and attend. They are a little bit more informal than what we have here in this regular board meeting, so there's a chance to provide input as part of that process as well.
Yeah, and to that last point, I mean, if you, you know, listen to the agenda tonight and the conversation constantly referred back to, we went over this extensively in FNO or in SVA or in SPA. And so, you know, long story short, that's where the majority of the work is done, are in these committees. And so this is an opportunity for the community to be able to lean in, if you want to roll up your sleeves, really understand the budgeting process, understand the curriculum approval process, all of those different components. This is where you can actually get your, you know, roll up your sleeves, if you will. So, all right, anything else?
One more. Do we still need description from SPA?
I thought we had it.
We have it.
We have.
Remember, Chastain said she had sent it off. I spoke with her before the meeting. I'll double-check, though.
All right, so we will then plan to launch tomorrow and send out, I think, Mr. Brandon, can you help me? I know that there was a request from, you requested email to go out, I believe.
Correct.
We're talking about to get the information out beyond just our website.
Oh, right, right, right.
Like a massive email, I believe.
Yeah, we'll use all of our outlets, including a mass email. So just to clarify, all of them will be open through October 28.
All, except for the SVA, which is already.
Well, one question. So have we gotten, have we received a solid response?
I don't know. I don't, I don't receive those so much.
I have not received any yet.
Okay. So I think we should probably just keep SVA open as well.
Agreed. Then we could communicate all of them and promote all of them at the same time.
Don't try and shortchange SVA. I see what you guys are doing, nicely. Okay, any, anything else, Dr. Merritt?
That's it. Thank you.
Staffing discussion?
All right, for staffing update, Ms. Langford is not here this evening, so we tried to provide the information in board notes to just have an opportunity for you to see an update from our last board meeting. I know that there was a question concerned just around openings, so just wanted to give you that data. She also provided you with some strategies that we're working on right now to currently address our openings, and then really some future strategies. One thing I will say, as we see, I think, a crisis within our teacher shortage across the nation in the state of Michigan, as I shared, we are in pretty good shape with our teaching positions in our district, which is really fortunate. We have over 1,100 FTE for our PCEA positions, and we're currently looking at about 30 openings. 15 of those are critical needs positions with resource room, speech, occupational therapist. We have six positions for classroom teachers. One is an elementary art position, five positions at the secondary level. So again, as we look to each of these board meetings, we're hiring campaigns, we open a position. We used to have hundreds of applicants. I will say that's not happening now, but we still have strong quality candidates that are attracted to Plymouth Canton. So we are not as concerned with our teaching openings. Same for our administrative openings. We currently have three that are in the process right now. They're posted and working and getting qualified applicants to apply. That's a good piece. I will share that although we're not as concerned, it is the season. So as we're seeing new hires, and I give you these numbers, you also see at times when we have resignations. So it is, because there are significant openings in other districts, there's kind of the competition, especially for these high needs positions. So people are able to offer steps, experience, top of the step, and so it's kind of competition among local areas. So we hire, and then we end up sometimes losing other members. But again, we're not as concerned with the positions that we spoke about. Now, where we do have a level of concern is our paraprofessionals positions, our food service, and our security. Those are three areas that we've been struggling to fill the positions. Our paraprofessional positions, that was a struggle last year as well. Right now, as of Friday, we had 71 positions open in our paraprofessionals, and I believe we have about over 300 total openings. And of those, they include both part and full-time positions. 33 of these are for one to two hours a day. So we do have coverage, for example, for lunchroom, so it's sometimes hard to fill that position. We've historically been able to work sometimes with our parents or families that are volunteering at the school, and they'll take this additional hour, but those have been a little bit more difficult to fill. So you saw in the update from Ms. Langford, really looking at potentially combining some of these part-time positions that would allow for full-time. Once you become 30 hours, then that makes that position benefit-eligible, so that could potentially be a little bit more appealing. So they're doing virtual job fairs, participation in local job fairs, trying to have our own job fairs. And she shared a lot of strategies that they're currently working on. Something that I'm excited about is she shared the frontline application system. So we are changing and upgrading our system. That moving to frontline will allow, one, our system will be able to be publicized on Wayne County. Right now, our system doesn't interact with Wayne RISA, so when they publicize the county openings, we can't have ours there. People have to come to our website, or we do participate in indeed for some of our positions, not all. But moving forward, that will be on the county website as well, and so that is something that is coming. Food service, as I said, is another area of concern. We currently have 19 openings in that space. And for our security, we have four openings, and I think in total, Mr. Tiskowitz, we only have about 16? How many security positions we have?
Yeah, roughly 16.
So just looking at some creative ways that she shared, that we're looking for recruiting and hiring. We'll talk about those in the days to come. And, but again, as I said, positioned pretty well for our, in light of what's going on from teacher shortages across the nation, but really looking for essential support positions, because as we always say, it takes a village, and every position is crucial to ensuring continuity of learning for our students. So just wanted to answer any questions. If I don't have the answer, I will get them from Ms. Langford and get back to you.
All right, any questions?
Yeah, you know, thank you for that update. And yes, we did receive quite a bit of information in boards and board notes. One thing that I don't see here, and I know that it's typically, I think, pertains to maybe our teachers in classrooms, but I'm wondering, how does the Grow Your Own program overlay into some of, you know, the paraprofessionals and other openings that we're seeing here?
So, great question. We've worked to do our own Grow Your Own program, but larger than that, so I think under Dr. Liz, she started that process here, and that's involving more of our building substitutes or our placement of early student teachers that are finishing in December, and we're bringing them onboard to either give them early contracts, so they're here already growing within our district, or having them as building subs that can transition over. But greater than that, when you look at the state focus on the teacher shortage and the idea of Grow Your Own, there's a bigger concept right now that's actually putting grant money or financial money to incentivize paraprofessionals, for example, that may be interested in joining the teacher ranks and some support in that area. So we actually attended a meeting. So we actually attended a meeting in Wayne Westland. They're on that process and looking for some collaboration there. Wayne Risa sent out some information today that could potentially be more of a collaborative approach to go after this grant on a larger level. So we are researching right now that ability to really focus on those that are in education and would like to move towards getting teacher certification, and how can we grow our own? Also looking at students and really introducing them and supporting our noble profession of education. I think at SPA, we talked about some ideas. It'll be some courses that are coming up, but longer term, actually talking about the potential of a teacher education academy. And so, literally growing our own from our own students that are interested in education. So some plans on the horizon, short-term, as well as long-term to really go at this. And we will use the word crisis, just in terms of, as I said earlier, that quality teacher is the number one ingredient for a successful student experience. And so, I think it's all hands on deck across the state to try to figure this thing out.
With respect to this number of vacancies that we have, I mean, with the number of employees that we have, it's not unusual to have vacancies at any given point. If we were to go back before COVID, how do these numbers compare at this time of year?
Pretty well. Again, we're actually in a better place with our teachers. And I think what was helpful this year is that although we returned to class sizes pre-pandemic, we had that commitment here that we really didn't want to go through layoffs this year, and so we were doing some shifts of positions, and so we're in a pretty good space there. Parapros even prior to the pandemic, it's always just been a struggle to get the positions filled, or sometimes we'll have vacancies that occur mid-year, and so that's pretty... Mr. Tiskowitz, you may be able to help me with those numbers, because I know you were over parapros. Statistically, how are we, we're 71 out of 300 and something, is that?
Yeah, we roughly have about 300 and, around 300 paraprofessionals. And as you mentioned, they range from full-time to, you know, working maybe five hours a week, so. But historically, the positions that were hard to fill were those before school, half hour before school, half hour after school, the lunch, as you mentioned. We didn't see the full-time special education ones that we're seeing now, so.
Where we struggled a lot, I will say, this year, probably more so, there were new positions in COVID, but our cleaning assistants were difficult to fill, our health assistants. I will say food service isn't, is, this is not our traditional. We typically have a full, pretty full set with food service. So this has been something that has been a struggle started through COVID and we're continuing to struggle with. And I think the same thing with security. This is probably the first year that we've seen. I think as we talk around, we've, you know, we had the conversation with transportation, with ABM, it's sometimes a quality of life and not a price now. And I think when you look across the industry, there are a lot of openings because people are choosing differently at this point, so we're dealing with that. So still trying to talk about how to best incentivize and really continue to lift up the profession as a part of our community and the cornerstone to entice people to take these positions.
So, okay, so I guess...
There's a long answer.
No, no, that's good. I guess when I look at ABM, we really struggled last year. They could not hire the staff that they needed to hire. And with the investments that we jointly made in that, we're seeing full employment. We're seeing all of our cleaning positions under their process. They are fully staffed. I guess my question is, for these open positions, do we have to have new thinking? I'm not trying to, I know these are affiliated groups and it's not the board's role to do that, but I would encourage the administration to think differently. Come up with new strategies or new schemes to be able to attract or to hire these people, whatever the issue is, whether it be financial, whether it be the nature of the job, whether it be the combining things, you know, recognize that the board is very interested in addressing these issues and, you know, would welcome any creative thoughts that you have.
Just to clarify, so the answer was basically the, to remember Keogh's question, that last year at this time, we're at very, we're at pretty much identical staffing levels.
I thought I heard pre-pandemic.
Yeah, my question, my original question was on pre-pandemic. You know, it's, we know the pandemic has disrupted labor markets all over. So the ultimate question was, is how do the number of vacancies that we have now compare to pre-pandemic? And I think Kurt largely said, we've always had some hard-to-fill positions, especially those ones that are a few hours here and there, but we're seeing problems with food service. We're seeing problems with security. We're seeing problems with our special education staff that we've not historically seen, at least not to this level.
Okay, so it's not on par with pre-pandemic?
No.
Understood, okay.
That's, at least that's the way I took it.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
I want to echo what Member Keogh said. In terms of, you know, alarming, and I think you mentioned it yourself, that this is a huge concern. We hear it from families. We're hearing it from students, there are gaps. And this is a conversation that has just heightened over the last few weeks, and that's why I asked for this to be an agenda item for discussion. And, you know, a couple of things that I just want to ask, I'm not sure how they fit in with your plan, but in terms of, I'm glad that you're partnering with Wayne Risa to consolidate these positions at the county level. My guess is that's going to take time to implement. The other one is Mesa. I'm looking at their website. They have part-time and full-time positions. I don't see Plymouth Canton well represented in the Mesa openings. So again, how do you branch out? I asked about the Indeed question, and I, the response was not all positions. And I guess at this point, given how urgent or how crucial the situation is, how do we utilize all aspects and all hands on deck? Like, we got to get these filled now. You know, I don't have, I feel like I'm not patient enough to wait for something to take place two or three months from now and/or next year as we start to move these things forward. These are vacancies where our kids need the professional staff, especially with the parapros, the special ed parapros. And, you know, it's just painful to see such a huge gap in these positions.
So I definitely want to appreciate your urgency, and when you say "how can we be a part of" is good. So one of the techniques that I think that Ms. Langford shared is now sending out emails to say we have these openings, so you even personally get that information and talk to people about it. I think that what we say even among us, especially through the pandemic, we have to watch how we message about our own jobs, like, this has been so difficult, this is so challenging. But rethinking how we communicate about education, the message that you just have, it's so extremely important. And when I talk about these positions, especially like paraeducators, oftentimes, these are families that have taken on the positions to support schools. So being able to reach and communicate that we have these openings, so now that's kind of an effort to make sure that when we have these openings, she's pushing out to all staff members. So now 2,800 people then can take that and be a key messenger to say, hey, Plymouth Canton is a great place to work, and this is really valuable work on behalf of students. And so, you know, just, again, some of the utilizing of social media, the videos, the things that you're seeing that are some new thinking. We're having a conversation, some things that we talked about in terms of other ways to incentivize that we'd like to talk about next week as well, so she does have some creative opportunities in looking at how to address this. But I, the bigger piece that I think, it has to be the collective effort of everyone, not just the HR department. And that means everyone that works in the district to continue to communicate that this is a great place to be.
It is. And my last question is more of a deeper dive into the root cause of where we are. We know COVID disrupted the marketplace. We know there have been less people going into the education field over the last 10-plus years. That's going to be, you know, a huge shift that we have to fix. But have you looked into other root causes of these positions not being able to be filled?
Yeah, just across the state, there, you know, multiple studies right now. Some of the things that are coming out is quality of life, people are choosing differently, so it's not an education issue. It's a, I think through pandemic, for some, the work was able to become remote, and so people are shifting in that way, and we can't really do our work in a remote space. This is, you have to come every single day, so I think people are making different decisions, and there are just a lot of different opportunities, I would think, that are available across the workforce. So it's still continuing to be, I think, for all, workforce development. I think attraction, again, starting as young as our students. Truly that idea of what's coming even out of the state studies is about growing your own in order to fill these vacancies. And as I said, again, we are, we are in really good shape for our teaching positions, which everyone can't say the same right now, and so that's definitely a struggle. So when you look at, to answer that question, it's not just Plymouth Canton trying to figure out, but definitely is our state working to say, what are some of those outcomes? And those are some of the things that we've heard. And that piece about it not necessarily being about the price point at this point, but I think that that, it's also real, that people have, as I said, even, we've started off the year and we've had some positions that have opened up because people have been able to go for, you know, higher amounts.
Right.
And they will leave and then say, well, I'm going to come back, because I know I can go get my experience, and then you're going to match my salary when I get back. So it is kind of a...
Yeah, I've heard that in conversations. So if you're watching, please join the PCCS family. We need you.
There you go.
Number Brooks?
Yeah, I was wondering if there was any kind of internal policies or anything that might get in the way of hiring good, quality employees for support positions?
Nope, I don't believe CS is having barriers to hiring, so it's, it's not, I think that, yeah. I think I would answer that question, no.
Okay.
That's a fair question.
Number McCoy?
I just wanted to echo what Member Keogh was saying about, like, really maybe trying to figure out why we can't hire and reimagining what we're offering. Because it is true, it is kind of now a seller's market. People can go elsewhere and get their steps, maybe a better teaching load. And even for other jobs, I'm wondering if childcare is still a factor for some people, especially the support positions? Because I know there's still, in many cases, not enough childcare available, and that may also inhibit people from working, which the pandemic just exasperated. And so if you don't have childcare, you're not going to, you can't go to a job that's face-to-face.
Perfect. Any other questions?
Just, I want to piggyback on what Ms. McCoy just said. You know, we've discussed this in other meeting, or meetings, in terms of exit interviews. So if people are leaving, ask why they're leaving. If people are choosing to stay, ask why they're choosing to stay and being champions for our district. So I think that, those are really great ways to mine that information that we're all wondering right now.
That's a good point.
All right, any other questions? I think we're good. All right, so last discussion piece is board goals. So ultimately, we sent around earlier today a draft of the board goals. I guess I'll call it skeleton. What'd you call it, Patrick?
A straw man.
Straw man, straw man of board goals. And just as a reminder, how we got to this was, we did a workshop, broke into groups, ultimately captured feedback from each of the groups, sent that to myself, Patrick, and, I'm sorry, Member Keogh, so I, you know, I reserve the right after 8:45, just call you by 8:45. But, and Members Sedu as well. And then we went through and we just mapped it to, first and foremost, what you see as the overall responsibilities of the Board of Education. So really taking that, you know, it's our job to establish the vision for the district and then ultimately provide oversight for that. Then it's also our responsibility to supervise and manage the superintendent, to pass policies, business and operations, and then ultimately curriculum. So we looked at all of the different pieces of feedback that came from, from each of the board members, and then we put them under one of those ultimate responsibilities for the Board of Education. So tonight, what we'd like to do is just, you know, highlight them and then ultimately provide the Board of Education with, the full board, with an opportunity to either ask questions tonight, and then of course, we'll provide an opportunity for everyone to send in additional feedback and suggestions or questions as we look to finalize this. Would you add anything, Member Keogh, or Sedu?
Yeah, so I mean, just the premise of this is, we were thinking about how do we actually document the board goals and be reflective of our responsibilities that we have in both the statutory things as well as the work that we do from an oversight perspective? And to try to make sure that we clearly communicate the things that we've agreed to as a team of eight in the dynamic plan, and how those things are then reflective in the board goals. We recognize that the board doesn't really have most responsibilities of executing these things. These things are largely administrative actions, but we want to make sure we're clear about our commitment and our work that we're doing there. And, you know, a big part of this is making sure that we're providing the necessary resources and other things in order to be successful. So, you know, although Monica, these are board goals, we definitely welcome your input into this process, because, you know, our intention is, some of these goals will absolutely apply just to the board. They're about how the board communicates out and how we do work at a board level. But other things will be goals that will cascade down. And so we want to make sure that we've got the right input from you as part of that process, both as a part of the team of eight and making sure that we're not identifying something that might be problematic. So that's, you know, and for all the board members, this is a draft. I mean, this was the subject of lots of conversations that we had here, a couple of conference calls that we had. It is by no means locked in stone or anything like that. So it is definitely fungible to be able to adjust and change this.
And I'll just, I'll add as well that, to me, this was a really good process in doing this and establishing board goals, because what it really forced us to do in a good way was to constantly refer back and say, well, is that our responsibility, or is that the administration's responsibility, right? And to make sure that we're staying in our lanes from these five things is really critical. And so that was a lot of the conversation that we had. So although there, you know, once again, the biggest thing we kept looking at was, we're not the ones who are actually doing that. There's an oversight component to this, but at the end of the day, the work, as we all know, has to be done by the superintendent and by the administration as a whole. But it's important for us to have guiding goals for ourselves every year, so we're not all over the place. You know, we have to have specific goals and responsibilities as a body as well to hold ourselves accountable to, and the community can hold us accountable to as well. So, Members Sedu, anything you would add to that?
No, it was covered. Member Keogh covered it. Thank you.
Okay. Best way to do this, do we want to go point by point? Do we want to kind of go open it up to questions or feedback? What's the, what's the preference of the board?
We also recognize that you're just seeing this today.
Yeah.
So, you know, we've already violated one of the things that we asked for, for ourselves, is giving you time to reflect and to look at these things.
Yeah.
But, so we're not necessarily expecting this to be final discussion, but we would welcome any feedback that would happen now.
So just looking at, for instance, the vision of 2022, 2023 goals. So some of them do just apply to the board, like, for instance, increase board presence within the PCCS community at all levels to ensure community voice is represented. Are we going to, like, add something to that so we have something to measure against? Or add some...
Right, so I think that...
Dates or something a little more tangible so that we know if we did it or we didn't do it?
Yeah, I think that the premise that we had with this going in, and I think a really good point is, is that these are the conceptual goals and that they need to be then translated into smart objectives, something that's specific and measurable, actionable as part of that process. And so a way that we can do that, you know, those will be some of the, and then we'll have the tactics that will, that will come out of those particular items. But yes, I think that's a really good point, is that we have to say, how are we doing this? And how do we measure, what does success look like?
And also full ownership of it, right? Meaning, part of the discussion was, some of this, as we look to blow these out and, you know, drill into the tactics of it, some of this work should actually be done at the committee level, right? It shouldn't be done by, by, you know, a sub, you know, three people. This, some of this work around policy obviously should be done in the policy.
Right.
And so, so I think the original, the biggest component of this was, one, to make sure that we reflected the conversations that were had during the workshop, and then, two, to make sure that we're landing on the main objectives. And then, three, to say, okay, now who's responsible for blowing this out and setting the objectives and the tactics that go along with it?
Because we, I'm sorry, because we tend to have a lot... Because we, I'm sorry, because we tend to have a lot of really good ideas and we, we really want to do these things. But I think unless we actually say set the dates, like for, for the community forums for the dynamic plan, like we set the dates. And so then we have them.
Right.
And so if we set the dates or we have some kind of common calendar that says, there's all these events, what are you going to take?
Yeah.
You know, that way we ensure we're actually getting out there.
So, so, you know, drawing upon that, obviously, like you said, this is a draft. I still need to kinda comb through it and digest it and to gather my thoughts. But will we have a board workshop where we really dig into those SMART goals? And, you know, identifying those dates and even holding ourselves accountable to doing a mid-year check-in, saying, how are we doing on those, those goals? Those are the, the kinda next steps I would love to, to know about.
So my, once again, I think, and, and we can, could do another workshop. Or we could also look at these and say, these are great starting points. Now let's identify, once again, policy's the easiest, right? Of, of these policy goals, can the policy committee then take them and ultimately set those dates, do the work, right? Because that versus, if we get into a workshop and we try to tackle all of it, I don't think we'll ever get to, you know, to the end product. Versus if, if we disseminate it amongst the, the appropriate committees, then I, I feel like we can get to the end product a lot quicker.
And, and I think that can work for policy, for business and operations, that could work for curriculum. I think when we get to the things like vision and oversight, as well as supervision and, and management of the superintendent, you know, the, the role that we have in evaluation. I think that might be something we wanna do as, as a board.
Yeah.
We could do something like this and take out twenty minutes at the end of a, of, of a meeting to have a, a discussion on those topics.
Yeah, yeah. And I, you know, to continue to move the ball forward, I would basically, you know, recommend we put together a subcommittee, whether it's the three of us or if there's. Three other folks to take a stab at that, right? I, I think if policy comes back, SPA comes back, you know, everyone comes back with their recommendation on, on the tactics and the objectives. And we're able to look at it collectively and then provide feedback, I think we'll, we'll be able to finalize this within a workshop.
So to that end, we have a draft that the community is not able to see today. Can we set a date in which we plan to issue our goals so that it is, becomes a more public facing document?
Yeah. So why don't we set two, two dates, one, a workshop? And then, and then I think based off that workshop, we can then say when we'll finalize it. So can you pull up the, the master calendar? Or we can all go to the master calendar?
I'll get it.
To see what else we have. So before we set the date for the workshop, just to make sure we're all on the same page. So ultimately, what we wanna do is take these, once again, policy, F and O, SPA can, can take, and once again, to Member Kehoe's point. These are just recommendations. Once you get into policy SPA, you're more than welcome to adjust, you know, remove, add, whatever, you know, whatever you'd like to do. And then ultimately during the workshop, you would actually bring the, you know, the, the updated version along with the SMART goals or the objectives and, and the tactics. Are we all on the same page with that? Okay. So then the question is, or the recommendation is probably this is something the workshop should take place in November. To allow for a cycle of each of the committees to, to take place.
Not too late in November.
Not too late in November. That's right.
So if you look at availability, it looks like mid-November is pretty.
Do we wanna do, let's see.
A quick question, did we decide to change the meeting for November eighth?
Yes.
We did? Okay.
Yeah.
Just make sure.
Where, where did we move it to? I'm sorry, I don't remember.
I think we just.
Eliminated it.
Yeah.
We just eliminated, okay.
So we have the fifteenth is a special board meeting and then the twenty-second is our regular.
Got it, okay. Got it.
Will there have been a committee meeting by?
Finance and Operations will have met three times by then.
By November ninth?
Yeah, I think November ninth is a good one because SPA will have met and policy will have met.
Yeah.
And by that time, SVA will have their students, okay.
Yeah, so we could do the ninth, the tenth, the ninth or the tenth?
Of November?
Correct.
I'm available.
Does the tenth work for everyone?
The tenth works better for me.
Yeah, I just look to, yeah. Any objections to the tenth?
Can we do something sooner than seven o'clock, like five thirty?
Yeah, can everyone do five?
I can do five.
Uh, give me just one second, just. To check not just my schedule, but families. So I don't, don't screw that up again. Yeah, I can do, uh. You're, we're doing the tenth?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I can do five thirty, or five or five thirty.
Okay, let's do five and we'll block it off for, from five to seven thirty, two and a half hours. Does that work? And, and the goal will be, once again, we'll have each committee kinda present out, or committee chair kinda present out on what they came up with. We'll allow feedback from the full board. And then ultimately, we can, hopefully, we'll get to a point where we're. Firing it that night, if not soon after. Does that work? All right. Any other, any other questions on this? Perfect. And once again, in the meantime, if anyone has any questions, if they have any recommendations that you want updated in advance, just, just let me know. Just send it to myself.
President Wilson, just for booking purposes, is that gonna be in this room?
Yes.
Okay, we'll get it booked. If that's okay. I don't think there's anything else in the room that night. Check just to make sure, but. Yeah, I'm just trying to think, EEF's not that night. They're. They're on Wednesdays. Give me just a second. Oh, no, that, that's on Thursdays. We're fine.
Let me Thursday.
We're fine, yeah.
Okay. One, um, one, one thing I did note that from a F and O standpoint, you know, your comment didn't, did not go unnoticed on. And I think on a lot of people that this is not sustainable, right? And so is that a, a goal that we need to look at from a board? Because once again, you know, one of the main responsibilities of the board is fiduciary. And so is that one of the, the goals in some way, shape or form that we need to add to this is really looking at, at, at that and, and how we move to more sustainable? So that's one. And then the second question that popped in my mind, once again, to that responsibility is. Do we need to set a goal as a board to get more proactive? We've talked about it in the, in the past, but even more proactive on lobbying and, and, and really trying to get the per student cost up. So, so how do we, are those two goals that we should add?
So, I would say that from a, putting us on a stable front, we've made conscious decisions to make the investments that we're doing. So it's not like we are making these investments and being surprised by it like some districts were. We made conscious decisions to have a planned use of fund balance in terms of what we're doing. So I don't think we need to change anything on that. Those are the conversations we've had as a board, those are the discussions that we have as a, as a team about where we want to make the investments. But I, I do wholeheartedly agree around the issue of advocacy and being able to address that. And we have to be careful. We as board members can do that advocacy. We have to be careful about not dragging the administration into that process. Because the administration can only provide factual information on those topics. We can advocate, advocate for political action and for other things as part of that.
Agreed. But going back to the.
I think, I think it should be a goal.
Okay, perfect. But going back to the fund, but you're saying you don't think we need to address the, the fund balance piece or the?
Well, because I think it's got the balanced budget in there.
It's, it's, it says that we wanna have a balanced budget, but it's actually, we make conscious to have an unbalanced budget. And so, and we, we talk about the allocation of resources that we're doing. So, I'm sorry, we don't have an unbalanced budget. We have a planned use of fund balance. Sorry, I misspoke. So, we have a planned use of fund balance. That's not sustainable long-term. But those are the investments that we as a board, in conjunction with the administration, have said, these will make the difference for our students. These are the right things for us to do. And so I think that the advocacy goes hand in hand with that. And that to some degree, we're doing a surge right now. We're putting additional investments in to try to be able to drive better outcomes and to try to address some systemic issues that we have. We may find some of those programs are really good. And some of those programs may not live up to the expectations that we have. So we compare some of those things back. But we will almost always have a greater appetite than we have resources the way we're being funded right now. So we have to find the best programs for us to continue to do. And so as, as part of that, but I think that's work that we do in the budget process. I think that's work that we do in the committees. I think that's work that we do in, in the whole board about where we make those investments. So I, I guess my point is, I don't think it is incumbent upon us or right for us right now to say, we're gonna get to a, a zero use of fund balance. We, we still are in investment mode at this time.
For how long? So I, I guess that's what I'm struggling with is, I agree, and we've talked about this for, you know, for a couple of years, right? Like we, we are strategically investing. And, and that makes sense. And I'm, I'm all about the surge. I, I get that. But, but the question is, I think we have to get proactive and say, we know it's a surge, but then at what point are, are we also tapering to make sure that, that we, we stay in line?
Yeah, I think that the administration's already done a fair amount of that work and we can bring that forward to the full board. Where they have projections based upon the reduced funding that we get from the, the Wayne Risa enhancement village. But we've also been really lucky from a financial perspective. The ESER funds have given us the ability to address some of these problems that we have. And we, through the very careful planning that's gone on from the administration, we can use those ESER funds or the, the offsets that occur from that for a period of time. So I think it's incumbent upon us to share that information forward to the whole board about what this looks like on a, a timeline. Because you're gonna hit a situation where you're gonna have to either reduce those programs, you're gonna have to make cuts, you're gonna have to get more revenue.
Yeah, and, and I think having that advanced insight into where we see those reductions happening strategically. So that we're all in a line as to, to, and that's part of why the question about the foundation. Because, you know, one, we have new leadership, the new leadership, you know, she seems very aggressive in a good way. And so is there an opportunity for some of the community work that we're doing to, to close that gap, right, as, as we're seeing the, the funds that are? So, so that's what I'm asking for, is something that, that shows the, and it sounds like it's already done, which is great, and we can bring that forward. So I don't wanna belabor it, but I just wanna make sure we're.
Probably needs to be updated, but I don't wanna say that we can come to the next board meeting or anything, but you, you've done a lot of good work and projections on that front.
She was sweating over there. No, no, I, yeah.
But I also wanna caution us on where the EEF is right now. I'm a member of the EEF board. The EEF board has got about a million dollars. That's their total amount that they have. And some of that money they use to help provide the, the gains on that money to provide the kinds of grants and activities. It in no way can make up the differences that are there. It's been fantastic at being able to fill the gaps in individual. In individual classroom grants where a specific teacher needs things that are not part of the normal budget cycle or a process to be able to support them on those projects and to drive innovation in other areas. Unless, unless something radically changes from a philanthropic standpoint, it will never have the money to be able to make up the, the gaps that we have as a, as a district.
No, I understand that. So sometimes, you know, sometimes I, so what I'd like, can, can you regurgitate to me what you hear me asking for? Because I just wanna make sure I'm articulating what.
So I just, I mean, I think that the EEF should, can and should be.
No, not not for EEF, just overall, what, what I'm, what I'm at.
Oh, sure, absolutely. So I think that as we look at the work that we're doing as a board and we look at the financial aspect of it and the conversation we just had this evening around. Our, our end of year audit and, and results that we have, we have a not, we have an unsustainable planned use of fund balance. We're using our, our fund balance that we have to make investments in the district. And your question, or your ask for the, for the board, as I understand it, is to come forward with the projections on where that goes in the future. Based upon the programs that we've talked about, based upon the ESER funds that we have, based upon the changes in the Wayne Risa money, based upon conservative projections. That we'd have in terms of the funding that we get. How does the next year, two years, three years, four years, five years look? So that we can see, is there a cliff or is it a taper? And how do we need to manage that as we're thinking about the, the investments and the programs that we're doing in the future?
Yeah. Is that? That's it, Spada.
Okay.
I think that's a, a discussion though for the community also, because this is their children. I think, I, I think in some ways, people don't understand the gap in funding. Because the boards for years, for absolute years, have made do with a lot less than they should have been getting. And really stretched it. Because for years and years, the people in finance have really been creative with, you know, stretching the bond dollars. And allocating anything they could to, you know, grant programs and other things to free up general ed money to keep things going. And so the economy of scale has really, I think in some cases. Kind of let the community not understand the precarious financial position we could be in. Like if we didn't have the Wayne Risa money, you know, that would even be a bigger gap. Because everybody wants the programs and we want to support the students and we want excellent educations. But we're, you know, if we're getting eighty-seven hundred dollars and we need, you know, over ten thousand, that's a big gap. In our, in the spending. And I think we need to make sure the community understands that and sees that. Because I'm not sure that people understand exactly, number one, how the schools are funded and what is actually going to happen. Like, we could go back to having a cut in state per pupil funding and then you're cutting programs.
Right.
I think that that's something that is a good board goal for us to have as, as part of that education process. Because it is, people, people look at the construction that's going on in the district and say, oh, the district is flush with money. They can, they can do all these things. There are different pools.
There's bond money.
Exactly. We have to be able to explain that process to people in terms of what's happening.
Yeah, I wanna make sure we don't lose what Patty just said. In terms of having a community session or board meeting, whatever, that may be around funding. You know, one of the things that we don't totally see at the moment is the, the decade-long fund, the cuts that staff and schools endured. All of those cuts that kept happening year after year after year have never been made whole. And so we're at a point where, yes, we're seeing a little bit of extra money, could be ESER, could be from the state aid fund, but that doesn't make up for the ten-year gap. So that ha, that forum is important. But the other piece I think is important for us to highlight with the community is the lack of funding we get for students with IEPs. That's a huge gap that we just cannot seem to fill. And where that falls, I don't know. I think, again, to Patty's point, that is a larger community discussion. So we all are aware of where these gaps are and how they're impacting our kids and our staff.
Well, not just IEPs, any child that receives special services.
Right, right.
Five oh fours.
Right, five oh fours, IEPs, yeah.
Multi-lingual learners, kids who take the bus.
Right. Yeah, we don't get funded for transportation.
And the truth is, I think that's, you know, part of the power of getting ahead of this and projecting it is that we're able to telegraph, you know, we're able to, to basically. Get ahead of it and say to the community, you know, this is what we're, we're looking at, right? We, we're investing now, but this is the taper, this is the cliff, or whatever the case is. So that, that provides an opportunity to engage the community. So if we're thinking about. So if we're thinking about tapering in one way, but, you know, communities has other ideas, great. But I think we have to, from a engagement standpoint, I don't know if you can, if we can necessarily just, you know, and I'm, you're not saying this, but I don't think we can just put the community in a room and say, what should we do? I think we have to come forward with a plan and, and be able to communicate that before we're actually implementing it. So we're telling them what we're about to do, we're telling them, you know, what we're doing, you, you know, and, and we're over-communicating that. Because everything I'm hearing, and I, I agree with what everyone is saying, is that there's a perception, and then there's a reality. And so I think the, the more we can get ahead of this conversation, be transparent with it, the, the, the better, right? Because in no way, shape, or form is there this direness per se, but, but it calls for strategy and, and getting ahead of it.
Yeah, and that, that's because, we're not in a dire situation because the district has done a really good job.
That's right.
Um, and because we've been blessed by the support from our legislature and our governor over the last few years, that we've gotten, um, more funding to support them. Because our community supported us with the Regional Enhancement Village. So we've had a lot of things that have broke our way, it's still not where it needs to be.
Right.
And I think, you know, Patty's point is really right on. How do we educate the community on this process? Because it, and we need to think of, we need to think of multimodal. It can't be just a forum that we do that seventeen people show up for. We need to think of ways that we can do a blog, or, you know, write a, a, a video, or an infographic, or something like that, to be able to help illustrate this. And I think it would be useful for us to prepare these materials and then test them. Um, you know, focus group, or whatever it is, you know, parent council or other groups, perhaps people that are not familiar, and say, does this make sense? Because sometimes we're sitting up here and like, we've been immersed in this stuff for years and years. It's like, well, of course, you know about proposal A and what, what, the, the way the funding is done and all that.
I'm going to, I'm going to guess a lot of parents in the district were not homeowners in nineteen ninety-four.
Exactly. Exactly. All right. So being able to articulate that process is going to be important.
Perfect.
Just throw that out there.
Yeah.
All right, well, good, good discussion. It sounds like we have a couple addition to the board goals, uh, that we'll add in there. Should be great. All right. Uh, last thing I would, I'd just add before, um, future, kind of going back to future agenda topic, I do want to circle back on marketing, uh, and have, uh, you know, Mr. Brandon come back and update us again from a marketing standpoint. We left that out there as a next level to do, uh, as he was setting, uh, baseline data. So we said that we would bring that back up. So, you know, let's look at that on a, a future agenda topic to come back. So that surfaced a couple times during this board meeting. All right, were there any follow-up board questions that were not answered? Or what were the follow-up board questions?
It was citizens' comments about the band. And we got that in board notes.
Um, no, just my ask on the HR was really, it wasn't an open question, it was just the ask to be creative and to come to the board with, with those, those options. You know, it's to know that you've got the board's support and anything that can happen there. So it's, I know that there's some work that's happening on that front, so, but I don't think it's an open question right now. At least that's my perspective.
So no open questions for follow-up this meeting?
I do have a, a clarifying question. In terms of going or talking deeply about increasing student enrollment, is that something that I should work with Member Kehoe on with F and O? Or is that a larger board discussion that we want to have with Superintendent Mayor in terms of, it's a collective goal? I mean, we, we've talked about it.
I don't think it's just F and O.
Okay, so, uh, when do we want to have that? I just don't want to lose that conversation piece in terms of what Dr. Liz is doing, what Superintendent is doing, what Nick is doing, where we, uh, see ourselves, but that conversation at a larger scale, student enrollment.
Yeah, well, so what, what would you see as a, is it a presentation, or just a op- open discussion, or...
So, I, I'd ask you, Monica, how do we, how do we roll up the work that's being done, um, around student enrollment?
Before you ask her that, can I just add one piece that I would like as a board to put on the table? Because it is within our purview, which is to increase the school of choice pool from two fifty to some number that we talk about.
Sure, absolutely. I mean, I think all of those things are levers that can be, that can be moved. Um, and we also don't have to do it on the specific grades and the other work that we've done. There's lots of things that we can, we can do there. But, you know, we're aware at the, at the board level of just a fraction of the work that's going on. And one of the things that I think we want to have some sense for is what's being done to directly address, um, market share or, um, enrollment, uh, information? And then what are some of the things that are happening, you know, tangentially? Um, you know, there's a lot of things that happen, you know, that, all the work that's happening with the, um, with the family presentation nights. I mean, this is work that helps to, to, to do that, but it's more of, not a direct thing. It doesn't have an explicit goal of trying to get people to come in. But if we put a billboard out on I choose seventy-five, that would have an explicit goal. So I guess the question is, is how do we roll up all the great work that's happening to be able to help us to have some visibility into that process? And we'd hope that there would be explicit things there, as well as things that are just designed to provide more visibility to the quality of the district and to the, the, the quality of the programs that we offer and everything else.
So I think that, you're not asking for an answer tonight, Greg?
I'm asking you to, my, my suggestion is, think about that, and then come back and say, what's the best way to, um, bring that information forward?
So are we requesting a presentation as part of it?
It could be, I, it could be a workshop, you know, it could be a board workshop. Um, but it doesn't have to happen next board meeting, I just don't want to lose this conversation, so I...
Well, I just want to know that, yeah, I guess I'm just trying to get to the expectation, right? Because, once again, the, the work of that happens with the administration. Of course, once again, we have oversight of that. But for us to get into a board workshop and just kind of talk about it is one thing. But if we're asking the administration to bring a plan, a strategy, a presentation, then that, that we can, you know, then review with them, I think that that's something totally different, right? So that's why I just want to be clear on what we're, what we're asking.
What I think I heard, and that gives a little bit of flexibility in what that looks like, is to think about, and then we could present. So we could come back and say, hey, this is as a team, we've strategized, this would look like a presentation, this looks like a workshop, this looks like, so I think that, um...
It's a topic that we want to talk about, but the form of it, you know, what's the recommendation?
Yeah.
What's the best way to bring that forward to both inform the board, as well as to give us the chance to have feedback and input on it? Like, like Anupam just said, is, is, you know, what, what are the, what are the options for increasing school of choice? Um, what are the, the, the impacts and drawbacks that? You know, we've, we've really done that in a largely cost-neutral way, because we've taken advantage of the, the
Open seats.
The open seats that we had. Within the, the, the number of, of caps that we have, we don't have to hire any teachers. But that doesn't, that isn't, we, we don't have to do that. We could say we have a greater number of, of, of school of choice, uh, seats that would require us to hire new teachers.
And, and perhaps look at the policy of school of choice enrollment.
Correct. And all, and all of those things kind of come into that.
Exactly, exactly.
And as, as a specific data point in that process. But there's a lot of things that go into, um, into that data.
Right.
And you want to have it on this side of the calendar year, preferably?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Because if we're going to change policy, we've got to have it by, I would say, January in term...
So one thing I would ask is if, if we can set that when we come back with the discussion.
Yes.
Because I just, I want to make sure that we're, we're thoughtful and strategic in terms of that response. And, um, I know we only have one meeting in November, and...
Oh, that's right. That's right, okay.
Think about the form and the process and the timeline. And then that would be my recommendations, come back to us to say, here's what I suggest.
Yes, I love that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And you'll send it in board notes, the, the suggestion?
Um, yeah, we can either, we'll talk about what that looks like, and I can say, board notes, maybe we're going to have a discussion this week, whatever that looks like. Yes, I'll keep updating you either in board notes or, or meeting. Does that sound good?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Perfect. All right. Is there anything else?
Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned at nine nineteen.
Busting through these meetings now, Sean.
What's that?
Busting through the meetings. Nine nineteen.
But I want to make sure everybody has in their mind the new amount, you said it, is ninety-one fifty. So I just want to make sure everybody hears that. So Patty, I know as we referenced today, last year's...